Well.
That's one thing I didn't check on.
It's really hard to remember everything.
Well, I don't think I had to worry about that last time. I don't remember what the plan was, but I don't, I didn't have John's login. I don't have a login. Hi, everybody. We'll explain what happened. We can laugh about it now.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know. I mean, I run the meetings for several different committees, but there may be some way to give people the information so that they can use your meeting. But I don't know how to do that.
Well, if I had his login information.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. Just didn't even think about it. Okay. And I just sent it out to the listserv and I sent it to all the counselors and to Bob and a few other people. So we should all be getting back. So thank you, Georgia. I'm glad you were here because I don't know what. I don't know what I would have done.
I don't see anything coming on the listserv yet. Did you say you sent something on the listserv?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, it should, uh, I'll check it again and make sure it went.
Uh, I do see it.
Oh, good.
Peter.
Uh, yay. A little stressful, huh, Barbara?
I'm cool as a cucumber, Peter.
It's Georgette's fault. Blame it all on her.
John, let's blame it all on somebody who isn't here.
Yeah, he's down there with the kangaroos. Yeah.
That's why somebody said, John, didn't make you the host.
Say what?
John, didn't make you the host? Was that the problem?
I, yeah, I mean, I don't have the login information. So, you know, I, yeah.
Georgette, do you know there's something new about me? My video I got working.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right. You're right. This is the first time I've seen your face so vile.
I know. It took forever.
Well.
Oh, boy.
Good going. Technology's wonderful, except when you need your own personal tech support person.
Hello, Rob, Eva, Chris. Hannah and Bob.
I am.
This is good. We don't have a million people on the call now.
Oh, yeah. I hope they check the listserv, though. I mean, the people who want to be here.
Yeah, so I'm getting messages. I just got a message from Jonathan Dale that he, so I, I never got a listserv message with the new link. So I, I don't know. Didn't, did all of you get the listserv message?
Yeah, I just sent it like five minutes ago.
Okay.
I've an email to this group.
Yeah, yeah, we got the email to this group.
Well, Eva, could you go ahead and just post it?
Just send, yeah, I'll send this to Jonathan and then I'll put the listserv.
Oh, here's the, I'm looking at my email. It was sent to, yeah.
If you have a convenient way of sending it to like whatever committees you're, you're on.
Forward to listserv. Yeah, I just forwarded it again to the listserv.
Thanks. Thank you.
There. Okay. Okay.
All right.
Hi, Mary. We'll just give people a few more minutes just because it was a little weird tonight.
Did John forget to make you the host?
Well, I could not get into the Zoom.
That's correct because he didn't, I assume he didn't make you the host. That's his Zoom link that you were using, right?
Correct, yeah.
Then he, then he would have tried to make you a host before he left. Otherwise, nobody gets in.
Right.
That's what I was guessing.
Well, I don't want to sound like we're pointing fingers, so.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm just explaining because it's happened to me too. I mean, if I'm trying to use a Zoom link that I set up and I don't make another person a host and I don't show up, nobody gets into the meeting.
Well, and I'm just laughing about it because there's so many things I went over for this meeting so I'd be prepared. And that's one like never even occurred to me, so.
That's okay. Like I said, it just happens to all of us. That was my first thought while all of us are, you know, waiting at the door.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. And everybody's emailing me. I'm waiting. Now, so I said. Georgette, help, help.
Yeah, I suggested to Peter, maybe you already got the idea, but if you had your own Zoom account, just set up a new link.
No, no, I don't even have my own Zoom account, so. I mean, just one of those little personal ones for 40, but that would be a way of making the meeting short, right? Forty minutes, gotta go.
That would definitely keep us honest. That's.
So we have all the council members here.
We do, but I know that there's others who are gonna be on and, you know, I don't want to jump too quickly into it. I mean, usually I'm like on time person, but since we did have this mess up. Hi, Dave.
It's okay. Nobody's hemorrhaging. It's not a medical emergency, bro.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, Mary, you got home okay?
I did.
Did you bring us any crawfish?
I did not.
Oh, great. All right.
Very bumpy ride. Not happy. I haven't looked out my window to see if the leaves are still there.
They're there. Steve said that they were too heavy to move. He said they have to get a special, something to push them out, but they're gonna do it.
Okay. And Christmas is coming.
All right, we can get started now.
Is Kathy here?
Kathy, no, you're right. She's not here.
I told you there's a.
Turn recording on. Oh, it's recording. We are recording.
Oh, yeah, because she's not on the listserv. Was she in that?
I thought she was on the thing that I sent out, the email.
Oh, she didn't see an email.
Well, I mean, it went to her work address, the town of Washington Grove address.
I can send it to her. I'll send it to her. I'll message it to her.
Thank you.
Steve, I can get it.
Trying to message to her.
Hey, we're all waiting for you. Did you get? There's a new link that was sent to.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to send it to her.
Oh. Wait, they're sending it, they're sending it to you.
I'm trying.
Oh.
I won't let me do it.
Who's?
I'm trying.
Hi, Jean. There was a new link for the meeting. I'm sure that's why you're calling, right?
Can you text it to her?
I'm trying.
Oh, text, yeah.
So I sent it to a bunch of people. Maybe not you when it was on the listserv, but I will send it to you again to make sure that you get it. So check your email in one second, okay?
Mary, tell Kathy.
Do what?
Her email. Because otherwise she's not gonna be able to connect on her computer if she just gets a text.
Actually, she doesn't get, was she on that? It, oh, let's see.
Text her to go back to her email and then she can take the link from there.
We, you know, I'm doing the best I can. I, you know, I did not have the link and I did not realize that until I was getting into it. So, you know, we're doing the best we can. It's on the listserv, several of us posted it.
We sent an email, but I guess it went to your work email. Can you get to that? You can't.
Right, okay, I'm sending it to you now.
And your phone just died.
All right.
Okay. Um. On where? Can you send it to kathyleman@verizon.net? I guess I can send it to you. Hold on. Just forward it. All right, I'm forwarding it to you, Kath.
See Jean Moyer. Neither of you coming?
So somebody sent the link to Kathy, correct?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
You mailed it to her.
Okay.
Which email did Jean use?
She said to Verizon.net because she can't get her work email at home.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jean said that she's also.
Yeah, Jean's on.
John, oh, good, okay.
Yeah, it went to my personal email.
Yeah.
And her phone died, so I can't call her.
Barbara, do we know who iPhone is?
iPhone, I don't know what you mean.
But.
There's somebody on here called iPhone.
And they're gone.
They're gone. Wow.
I'm not sure what happened to Kathy, but her phone died. Let me see if she answers her home phone.
Barbara, what happened to us doing the hybrid meeting? I thought we were gonna start testing that through the council.
Yeah.
Can you get it?
All right, that's all. Let's all walk over to the hall and meet there tonight.
You clicked on the URL link? You couldn't, you couldn't just click it? The email, so just click the, um. It says the URL, and so you should be able to just click that. Yes. Okay, so. The URL, I think the HTTP, just click that on and it should take you. Yeah, the blue one. There you go. Are you getting in? What's it saying? Yes. All right. Where? There's Kathy.
All right.
Okay.
There you are.
All right, yay.
Success.
Okay, so. Let's get started. That was about as much fun as I ever want to have in a town council meeting. I went to the link to join the meeting and I knew Georgette was running the waiting room and, but what I didn't realize is that I didn't have a way of setting up the meeting because I couldn't get into John's account. So we switched to Georgette's planning commission account. And I, we shared it with as many people. We put it on the listserv several times. I, you know, it's not good. I wish that this did not happen. We tried to make the best of it by posting on the listserv and sharing it with, sharing it with people who we knew were gonna be here tonight. So, that's the best that I know what to do. Thank you.
Are you recording the meeting? Yes.
Yes.
Then people have the recording.
Yes. So, so thank you, everybody, for being here and for all your patience as we worked through all of this. And so we're calling the meeting to order at 7:55. And could I get approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Yeah. Is there any discussion about the agenda items? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we approved the agenda. Normally, we would have approval of minutes. I was hoping to have some minutes from our previous meetings to approve tonight, but they weren't available, so we can just go past that item. Public appearances. Are there members of the, Kathy, do you have a question? I can't hear you.
You're muted.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay. Are Mary, Barbara, how are you? Are you voting? Am I counting you in that vote or?
No, I'm not voting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Public appearances. Do we have anyone here for a public appearance tonight? Okay. Treasurers' report, Jean.
Yeah, um, it was in the package. Interest of time, I'll make it very quick. I just wanted to make comments on contributions and donations, money to come in.
If you want to make it, okay, I can pull it up. So if people want to wait for a second, or do you feel like you don't?
I'm looking for it. There we go. Nope, you're not seeing it, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we see it.
Okay. Um, yeah, contributions and donations. I put a.
Excuse me, Jean, for interrupting, but could you enlarge it, please?
That good?
Thank you, yeah.
So at the bottom here, I've added the information. We have three major new funds. The Meadow Grant is being held as deferred revenue until we actually spend it. It's the same way we treat the ARPA money. But we have received checks at the Terry Cox Memorial. It has to do with, I believe, planting a tree or a couple trees. And I'll work with forestry about that. And also to mention the stump carving, we have received almost 2,500 to date for the stump carving. That's being held separately. The town is, has in the budget to match any donations up to a total of 5,000. So this gives us almost 5,000 to spend on the stump carving. I've been working with Tom Land on that. He sends, periodically sends out reminders if people want to donate. They can donate by cash, check, or I have instituted the ability to send money through Zelle, which is a new experiment that we are trying. As of right now, the agreement with John is we will only use it for receiving money. Ultimately, I'd like to use it to reimburse residents. But PayPal and Venmo have fees. So we went with Zelle. And so that is really all I wanted to say. There's notes about certain expense areas, nothing of any big importance. And we do have on the agenda to talk about the ARPA money. So that is the end of my comments. If anybody has questions tonight or later, let me know.
All right, any questions? Uh, let's see. All right, all in. So could I get a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll move to accept the treasurer's report.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, passes. I want to just take a second here. We invited Jason Mills to come to this meeting tonight, and he's gonna be looking at the old meeting link. So could someone kindly send him the new link? Thank you, Patty. Thanks. Okay. And it, it, I think he's the only one who would have be coming that would need that. Okay. So time for kudos. Kudos to the residents who participated in the East Woods cleanup. Bob Boar, Peggy Boar, Dave Carson, Chris Grisham, Deb Mel Thurber, Virginia Casada, Anna Spector, Joan Mahaffey, and Patty Klein. I know those cleanups are a big deal and it's so nice to be able to walk through the woods and have that stuff taken care of. The 30 or so residents who attended the town's diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging workshop. We had a questionnaire at the end of it, an evaluation, and we got pretty good feedback. And if anything, people were saying they wanted more training. They felt like it was a little too short. So, you know, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with that. Really, the next part of it is gonna be focused on the town council, the commissions, the committees. And there will be a three-part series for that. And that, right now, that will be the second part of the contract with Leadership Montgomery. So I don't know what will happen at the end of that. That's still gonna be a few months before we finish up with all of that. So, you know, I don't know what will happen beyond that. But yeah, the first meeting went very well and, you know, I was very pleased to see the turnout there. Thank you to Steve Wertz for his continued guidance on helping educate RJ on the many unique maintenance requirements of the town. I think we all know what we mean by unique. Virginia Casada and the lighting committee for getting the town of Washington Grove on track to purchase and control our streetlights. And Peter for contacting MCDOT about the need for better signage on the Humpback Bridge in the hope that we can prevent truck drivers from attempting, you know, one of these, don't try this at home. You know, they just can't do it, but they don't know it until it's too late. So the county did respond and they said they're gonna look into it, so.
They put up quite a few, they put up some signs. They, they put up quite a few, they put up some signs already.
Already?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
Yeah, I noticed them anyway. And there hasn't been any blockage the last three days.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So then on to the mayor's report. Uh, so the town council is going to bring a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order at the January town council meeting. As you know, we had a training for parliamentary procedure in October, and this, um, this, the town council is pretty much on board with adopting these, you know, formally adopting these rules, and that really involves making sure we have motions before we start discussions. Um, that's really the number one thing, I think, that, that we'll be working on, at least in the beginning. Uh, okay, I've got someone here. Lanham Zoom entered the waiting room. Okay.
That's Jason, sorry.
Thank you, thanks, okay. Right, and, and Georgette's currently in the waiting room anyway, so I, I should have just let that go by, anyway. Uh, okay, so Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, today, the Shared Use Path Committee met with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation to review their thirty-five percent plan. And we had met as a committee about a week or so ago, maybe more. Uh, they showed us their thirty-five percent plan, and we spent some time looking at it and kind of critiquing it, and it was, it's Margot Kavanaugh, Jay Everhart, Bob Boar, and myself. And we really went through it pretty carefully and met with Jean Kapuznik from the Department of Transportation, who you may remember who has come to our meeting before. And she really explained a lot of the process internally within MCDOT, which, like, for me, I feel like this is taking forever, and she kind of like walked through the different steps, the different departments, the different people, all these, these, uh, the plans have to go to before they get finalized. So it was kind of interesting, you know, to hear all that. Um, but then she was very receptive to our suggestions and comments about trees, about, um, there was, a- as you enter the path as it's designed now, it's, it gives you a very sharp turn to get onto the path. And we said, you know, could that be softened a little, things like that. So we, so we walked through a lot of the pieces of the plan to give her some ideas, and as I said, she was very receptive, and she's going to take it back to them. And they're gonna, you know, kind of massage it a little bit more, and ultimately, it'll be ready for what's called mandatory review, which is when it goes before the planning board, and then there's a hearing which everyone is invited to, to attend. Uh, and that, that's a big deal, the mandatory review. So, um, you know, that's, that's on track. It's slow track, but on track, so that was a pretty successful meeting. Eva, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I feel like I remember us trying to get a date, um, of, I know that it's not going to be exact, but is there a general idea of when they think it might be finished, or there's just no way to give us that?
You mean the path finished, or so the, uh?
Like, is there a goal in mind that they're working?
Well, the, the construction funds are allocated for fiscal year twenty-six, which I think starts in July.
Okay.
So, within that year. You know, she, she didn't really, you know.
That gives me something to shoot for in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's really, um, it's so hard to say, because so much of this is just, like, if, if, if she gives the file to somebody, they have, you know, two weeks to respond, and then somebody else is two weeks more. But again, you know, the mandatory referral is kind of like a, a big deal, and, and it's more concrete in terms of, you know, how definitive the, the plan is. You know, they, they really know what they're working with at that point, and they're all on board, and, you know, it's moving forward. So there's money for the continuation of the design in the bikeways plan, and in, there's money for the construction in the bikeways plan, so we've felt, you know, like, pretty, pretty good about that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, next, uh, the Commercial Corner ordinance. Peter, I'm going to ask you to talk about that. A- as, as we all know, we've been, the owner of the Commercial Corner wants to do some upgrading and building, and so, Peter, tell us, tell us what we need to know about that.
Okay, this is going to be wonderfully brief right now. I just wanted to just keep everybody engaged with this, because it's been such a long time. So it's not just, it's not just the Commercial Corner people, um, that's Tadyana Bell and the Bell Properties, it's the Grove. There's, there's an amazing amount of interest in, um, the two things. One, one is, uh, getting some more flexibility with the leasing. Hairdressers and churches do not make it a profitable building, and it's a catch-22, because they don't make any money, and as a result, they can't put any money back into it. And so we have, we have what we have right now. We also have a lot of new people in the Grove. You know, Seven-Eleven was here forty years ago, times have changed. We have a lot of people, we're bragging about our forty children, uh, under, forty kids under eighteen in the Grove. Uh, there's a lot of. Fifty, I said, yeah, fifty. And so, so there's a lot of interest in having something in the Commercial Corner that would be useful to the residents of the town. And so, um, you know, so it's in, uh, you know, I, we think it's, it's in the, it's in the comprehensive plan that we would look at having some more flexibility with leasing, and that we would allow a residential component. Um, so we worked up through the, um, planning commission, and we looked at the ordinance, it's a pretty brief ordinance. And, um, we kind of tasked, I was kind of tasked with rewriting, uh, the ordinance, and I've invited a few um, strategic people within the Grove to help me look at that, and we're working on that right now, wordsmithing it. We're going to put it before the planning commission at the next meeting, and I'm hoping that we will then present to this council in the January meeting, uh, those ordinance changes, so we can move forward. The Bell property people are very, very interested in becoming more grovey. They love to change the way the place looks. They'd love to, um, change it so that instead of us looking at the butt end of the building with its garbage, that, um, when this renovation takes place, we'll actually be looking at the, kind of the front, maybe, or both sides will be the front of the building. But, um, you know, there, it's pretty exciting what might happen here. And, uh, it's a long process, as you know, getting anything done within the Grove, so I just wanted to keep everybody engaged. And, um, I'd love to share, if we come up with some, uh, wordsmithing and changes, I'd love to send it out to the council and get your feedback, uh, preferably before that meeting, so that we can make some changes and get things to move smoothly. Any questions or?
But when you said the meeting, uh, when is the meeting?
Oh, which meeting are we talking about? The, well, well, the, just to, what would be, the next step would be to go before the planning commission again, and get the planning commission's blessing on the ordinance changes. And then, uh, my goal would be to get that done at the next meeting, and then be able to go to the January council meeting and present, and see if, if we can move forward with it.
Okay. Questions for Peter?
No, and any suggestions or ideas, uh, please let me know. Now, better before than during the meeting.
So do you have a draft of the ordinance that you're working from?
Yeah, yes.
Has that been shared with us?
Um, probably not. No, I, I just met with our group, um, this week. And we're making a few changes, but like I said, I will send that out to the council.
Okay.
You know, prior, as soon as we get something that's more formalized.
Okay, great.
And just, uh, last thing is that Bob's on here. Um, Bob, I thought you were out of the country, but you're in our select group, whether you know it or not, so don't feel like you're being left out.
Okay.
All right, thanks. All right, other announcements, the next Weed Warrior event is confirmed for December fourteenth, ten to twelve. And the next holiday show is also December fourteenth at seven, so you can pull weeds in the morning and watch the show at night. Uh, and I already mentioned the upcoming, uh, DI, DEIB workshops for the counselors, et cetera. Uh, any questions about that? No, okay. All right, so now we have, uh, a big piece of business to enter into, uh, and I sent you really like about seven o'clock, something that we had just received from the attorney, it's, it's a resolution uh, that really kind of covers a lot of ground and is, I think, really helpful for us, because, uh, it's a very, i- it's, it, it, it's kind of like a very detailed motion for us. And I would like to know if we have somebody who would like to move to approve this.
I will move to approve it.
And we have a second.
I'll second.
Barbara, I don't, I didn't get an email about it. Do you have it?
Okay.
To share or something?
It's in the, it's in the materials for the meeting tonight. So before we get into any kind of discussion about it, what I'd like to do, Bob Boar is here, thank you, Bob. Um, Bob is going to walk us through kind of like, how did we get here? Uh, what are we, what is the contract that we are looking at? Because the contract was sent around also. You know, what is the significance of this contract? If we say to, that, yeah, sure, we want that, the mayor to enter into, to an agreement, then what happens? So I, and there's, because, and I really want Bob to walk us through all of this, because there's just been so much going back and forth, and so many changes in what we've seen, that it would be really good to have it just capsulized, like, right now for us. And we also have Jason Mills from Soltees on the line, and if we have engineering questions as we move forward, then we can ask Jason, and thank you, Jason, for being here tonight. So Bob, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, you know, a tip, sort of a typical design, uh, build, bid-build contract has sort of two parts to it, which is the design part and the, which does all of the design work and produces construction documents, it's bid out to, um, to various entities who can, who then bid on it, and then it's awarded. But this is different. As you know, it's, uh, we're combining both the design and the build together into a design-build contract. And the AIA, which is the American Institute of Architects, uh, has a standard form that they've worked out a lot of the, the particulars of, uh, they come up in, during construction into a standard form. They've got a bunch of different types of contracts, and this is one of them. And this one, uh, the way it, it works is that, uh, the design, uh, build contractor, it's one, one entity, so there's one standard contract, which is, they're calling the A-one-forty-one contract, which is, is fairly general, but goes into sort of all of the mechanics and the liabilities, et cetera. It names the parties, it na, it indicates what the owner's program is, the desire, and in this case, it's the R-R-RFP is the program. It indicates the, the, the owner's budget uh, and indicates its timelines, and then goes through to sort of, to, uh, talk about the various parts of the contract. And the intent is for the two parties to sign this one, uh, and, and that sets the design process uh, in, in place, and the design is taken to a, a, what's called a preliminary design stage. It's also called a thirty-five percent design stage, where, wherein all of the parts of the design are, are actually, um, figured out that the, the contractor in this case will do the ser, do all the survey work, will do the, um, soil tests, and will do the flow analysis, um, and modeling in order to, to actually have the data that they need in order to do the actual, the real design work. From that, they will then look at the nine areas that we've suggested as places which, uh, need some assistance, and they will produce a coherent design made up of, uh, all or, or some of those nine areas into, uh, like I said, a coherent design that works to both mitigate the, uh, the flows, problems, the problems in flow, and also to, uh, introduce some detention of the water so that not so much goes into the West Woods. So that's a sort of a combination, and there's a balancing there that happens during the design. So once, once that design is complete, and, and there will be drawings that indicate this, uh, and the contractor assigns a dollar amount to that particular design, they'll present it to the town. The town, town will, um, well, actually, first they present the design, and then we go back and forth, and we said, yeah, maybe a little bit more of this. Why don't we do this instead of this? And they'll adjust the design, and then they'll assign the, the contract sum to it. They know that they have to stay under the, the, the value that we have, they know that. So they will be advising us in that, in what, what the scope can contain within, within the cost. So that's, that, once the, 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 the scope is determined by the, the set of drawings, the preliminary design, and the contract sum is determined, then the, the, what they are calling the amendment is executed, which defines that. So that happens, we're thinking wi- within about a month of, uh, signing of the, the initial contract. So it's a two-part, two-part thing. There's also, and it's considered to be an exhibit of the main contract, the A-one-forty-one contract. There are several other exhibits that were, that, that are mentioned in the, in, in the, uh, one, A-one-forty-one standard contract. Uh, that's Exhibit A. The Exhibit B is, I believe, uh, indication of insurance and bonds. Exhibit C, we're not going to use. Exhibit D is essentially going to be the RFP, which is the owner's program. And then Exhibit E is a modification to, uh, the, the definition of what preliminary design is, because being an AIA contract, they, they figured it was for a building, and it's not, so I kind of rewrote that for, to describe exactly what the, what the process would be. So that's the, that's the basic thing. We, we, we signed this contract before the end of the year, and then, you know, and once we have the preliminary design, uh, submitted and, and accepted, then we'll, and the price agreed on, we'll sign that, that part, and they'll get going. So that'll, that'll sort of define the whole project, uh, at that point. Uh, and, and there may, may be some, uh, there may be all of the nine areas included in it, there may be some of the nine areas included, but it'll, it'll be, like I said before, a sort of a coherent design is determined by the, the flows and the goals of the town. Any questions on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I actually rose my, my hand up for the first time ever, Bob.
Oh, good job.
Robert's Rules is coming, so I'm getting ready. So this thirty-five percent design, is that, is that what, is that a phrase? Or is that what we're setting aside for this, for SMI?
What do you mean?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I don't understand. That's why I'm asking you. Yeah, because it says in there that thirty-five percent of thirty-five percent, um, design, does that mean that thirty-five percent of the total funds is going to be?
No.
Okay, good.
That's thirty-five percent of the design process.
Thirty-five percent.
The design process is sort of divided into phases, and, and there's usually submissions of, at each point, to make sure they're on the right track, so.
Awesome. Oh, thank you. I, thank you. I know you've told me this before, but that's, yeah, that was my only problem with this whole thing. Okay, good, thank you. Let me put my hand back.
Any other questions?
This is probably a stupid question, but the, in terms of the, the contract and what we're paying, do we, when they give us a price, will that be what it costs for them to do the design up to that point, or is the design all part of it, and then they tell us what the price is for doing what they come, have come up with? Because the other one was paying, was spending all the money for the design. So this is, is this separated, the, the other contract part of it was that they were, they were going to do the design first. I, I guess my question is, but did you get the second part of that? I mean, the, the pricing that they'll come up with that we're going to sign for the amount of the contract is going to be the construction price?
The whole thing, it's the whole thing. It's design and construction complete.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll design to, to that budget. And I think that, I think that Sue Ellen is actually also going to, uh, make a modification. Oh, well, let me, let me back up. The next step was that Sue Ellen actually came in, uh, with some comments today, and I got a call from John at four o'clock saying, uh, please talk to Sue Ellen about the, about the changes that she wants to make to the contract, and, and getting a resolution for you guys, which I did, and she initially wanted to actually, uh, Which I did. And she initially wanted to actually, uh, have both the, the standard contract, the, the A141 form, the big thirty-two page long one, plus the amendment at the same time, because she had a concern about, uh, uh, encumbering the funds for, in order to make sure that we get the money from the federal government. So, instead of that, what we're, which makes it sort of difficult to, this is not a, uh, this, this form of contract really relies on signing something initially, and then, and then signing to, to get going on the whole process, and then signing something which defines the scope and the, and the cost and the time. You do all three at the same time. Uh, so what she, what, what she's gonna do instead is she's gonna make some modifications to this, this base contract, which makes sure that it can be interpreted by the federal government as encumbering the funds. So that's, uh, that she's gonna add some, uh, some language. She didn't have that today, but she's gonna add that language.
So, so what, so what do we need to do?
You need to pass the resolution, essentially.
And, and if that's all we have to do, then we don't have to meet again, and?
No, that, 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 that essentially enables John to go ahead and sign it.
It does, okay.
You, once the, once the preliminary design is done and presented to the town, then, you know, you'll be looking that over as well. Cause then the town, the town, you guys will have to decide what parts of the, of the whole thing we're, we're gonna cobble together into the final design.
Great. I'm ready to vote.
Patty, did you have a comment?
Well, I just wanna make sure that whatever Sue Ellen's comments are, get passed over to Jason. I don't know if he's had a chance to see them, or if Jason had any other, um, thoughts or comments about the process.
I, I trust Sue Ellen emphatically, and that's what she's there for. She's looking at it from a legal approach. I am not gonna have a comment on Sue Ellen's right up.
Right.
Uh, Jason, did you have any comments on what you've seen so far of the contract?
I, yeah, I went over the contract with John and gave him my, uh, comments. I think the other thing that I would really highlight that you wanted to see specifically, which is in there, is this thirty-five percent chant set is where you guys are gonna iron out anything that's unknown right now. And I think it's really important for everybody that's listening here to understand. It gets through everything that we've discussed in this contract. You do the work, they provide the, the input, the, you know, is there some unknown utility or something in the way that's a problem? We address it all, the thirty-five percent set. And then, you, as you said, you sign the final contract saying, here's what we're gonna go forward with. These are the projects we want. This is how we want it done. Now go forward and get it done. And it just give, it gets every bit of flexibility that you guys are looking for, and just enough, we'll call it, um, language in the contract to make sure that you get the product that you want in the end. So I think it does everything. And AIA is great for that, too. So, cause they put some nice language in for you guys.
Yeah, and if, I, I know you just got this on short notice, but it really does touch on what Bob is explaining and what Jason was explaining about, um, you know, proceeds of the project as, as much as feasible with the funding and, you know, and it talks about having a final review by Sue Ellen at the end. So there's, there's a lot in here that will really, that has really addressed a lot of the, the issues around this. So, I mean, I felt really good when I got this. I felt very confident that this is a, a good path forward for us.
You're talking about the resolution.
The resolution, yeah. So, is there more discussion on the resolution?
Well, I had put it in a couple of comments, uh, if I, um, realized that, I know the focus is on the ARPA funds, but the way I read it, it sounded as though only the ARPA funds equaled five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That is not true. I just wanted you to be clear that, yes, if your focus is on the urgency of getting this, uh, contract placed because of the ARPA funds and the deadline, I, just, you may wanna just change the word, saying the ARPA funds is the critical amount for this five hundred and seven thousand dollars max. It's not the only fund. I just wanted you to be, you know, acknowledge that you're clear on that. You're right, the state funds are not relevant to this resolution in the sense of the, but the total amount relies on the state funds as well. That was my only point.
I think her comment is, is good. Pat's comment is good to to add to that. If, if, if you want to add her, her language that she edit, suggested editing in, I think.
So do I have a motion to add that language?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, could you raise it for Kathy, or for all of us?
Uh, I will move to amend the resolution, uh, to reflect the edits that, um, Pat Klein proposed.
I think it's in my email, um, just to, to say that the ARPA funds are the critical component to fund this up to five hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have to pull this up on this. Did, did it, I guess everybody got that email, but I, I wanna make sure we all know what we're agreeing to do here.
Yeah, forget about the actual track changes I put in the document, if that's not what you're looking for, cause I added in the Maryland State Bond, and if that's irrelevant, it's just clarifying ARPA is only four hundred and twenty, twenty thousand dollars of the total five hundred and seventy.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen.
Kathy has a question, too.
I'm sharing my screen. Let's see. Let's see. Sorry, I'm looking for the document that I just opened. Okay, here it is. All right.
I think it was just my response back to you.
All right, can people see that now?
Really little.
Yes.
So Patty, what are you saying that you want, uh, Rob, I guess, is what?
Can I ask about that motion?
My, my motion was just to, uh, amend the proposed resolution. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure was there, if there was a, a motion to introduce the resolution.
Yes, it was, yeah.
Um, my, my motion was simply to amend the resolution to reflect these edits that Pat had proposed.
So all of them, you're saying?
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to, uh, implement them.
Okay.
Okay, if you wanna include the Maryland bond, the, the alternative was to say something to the effect of, just state that the ARPA funds are an essential component of the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and then you don't need to itemize the Maryland State Bond. I was just trying to simplify it for you. That's your choice. Doesn't hurt, I don't think, right? Rob, to put in Maryland State Bond funding in here as well?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking the, the, the. My motion, I thought your edits were fine. I understand some, someone wrote back, maybe it was Barbara, maybe it was someone else, that perhaps we don't need the Maryland State Bond, um, uh, uh, to, to be voted on, but, um, yeah, I did, I thought that this amendment, um, in, in, with the red lines that you proposed, Patty, made sense. That's what I was proposing.
Okay, that, if, that's fine. It's your choice. If you think that that's okay, cause it doesn't negate the relevance of the ARPA funds. It's just a little bit more, um, inclusive to show that it's a combination of both, right?
Right. I understood you to be making this more accurate, because it's not just ARPA.
Right. I said, the sense of urgency is to commit the funds, the federal funds now, because that's the deadline. The state bond, we actually have more, but longer timeline on.
But the resolution will, will enable John to sign the contract.
Right.
Okay, so, so Rob, you're saying accept all of these suggestions?
Just as we're seeing on the screen.
Do I have seconds to that?
Can I have a, ask a, a point of order? Is that what you say?
What is your question?
Rob's motion. I wrote down, he, he moved to amend the resolution to reflect Patty's edits.
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
You, we're talking about some other things. Do you wanna add something or not?
No.
These edits are all in this, this document that Patty had sent earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, is there a discussion about that? Okay, all in favor of the amendments that Rob, and is proposing, raise your hand. I can't see everybody. Chris raised his hand, I see. Uh, who else? I, I can't see Eva or Pete. And Mary. Okay, Eva and Mary, what was your?
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right, so we've accepted the amendments.
Yeah.
Now, let's go back and get the final vote on the whole kit and caboodle. All in favor? I see two people. It helps if you can use a little clicker thing, yeah, cause then you come to the top. Okay, four, and Mary?
Yeah, where is it? What little clicker thing? Yes, I'm a yes.
Yeah, okay, good, okay. All right, so that passed unanimously, okay.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Stop sharing, okay. All right, so we just passed the resolution for the stormwater management project, yes. More to come on that, I'm sure, but that feels like a really nice thing to get off our plate for the moment. Uh, and thank you again, Jason, for being here. I don't think we're gonna need you anymore. Uh, so, and then, uh, so, number eight on the agenda was approval of this, but we don't need to do that anymore, cause that was all included in that resolution, so we can check that off. And now we're on to other business, approval of a vacant house action plan. Do I have a motion to approve this? Mary, do you wanna make that motion?
Sure, I would make a motion to approve the resolution of the vacant house.
Okay, do I have a second? So, Chris, okay. Uh, Mary, do you wanna tell us about this?
Sure, um, let me find it. We, um, we looked at a lot of the, uh, the, the other towns, other municipalities that have come up with these vacant house, um, rules, and kind of adopted, adopted ours from, based on that, but making it more specific, um, to the Grove. The thing that we, um, when we had the last discussion at the council, um, John was pretty adamant about wanting Montgomery County to be taking, take, to take care of the things that Montgomery County takes care of. And the fact is that they have a lot in place for maintenance issues, and we know from what we've done, um, here already, that if, you know, if you, once you get on them, they're pretty good about following up for exterior maintenance. So that was an easy thing to do. Um, also, we know that they really won't go inside, so that's kind of a dead end in terms of getting Montgomery County to do anything. So, what we decided is, what, since what, our main concern for the Grove are health issues and fire safety. So, when we put in, um, what the requirements were for registration of a vacant house, um, we put in, um, requirements that they, that would satisfy, um, that would satisfy making sure that the houses were secure for those two things. So, um, one of the, um, requirements was to have a, require an inspection by a pest company to, to assure that there's no infestation of, you know, vermin of any, any kind. Um, the other was to require, um, if they have electricity on in the house, which would, which would make it, um, a fire problem, that they would have to have, um, fire alarms installed. And there are, um, I did some research in there. You can find, um, it sounds like, uh, battery, um, battery operated alarm system that communicate with one another. So if it goes off, um, in one, it'll go off in the other. So if they had, had some in the house, and then one in the outside, so that if, if the alarm went off, you would actually be able to, to hear it outside. Um, that would be, that would be the hope. Um, the other requirements for registration were to make sure that they were, um, had insurance that covered, covered the, the price of the house, um, should something happen, and, um, I don't have it in front of me. Chris, what were some of the other?
There's a fee.
Right, there's a fee. But, I mean, there, as, as you read the document, there's a whole lot of, um, of definitions that, you know, require specifying particularly, you know, what does it mean to be a vacant house? You know, how do you arrive at that? I mean, it's, there's a lot of complicated details for it. Um, so I, I think, I don't know, did, did anybody have a chance to read it, or have any questions about, about it specifically?
I was trying to, I was trying to, to attack it, because I tried to do this and it didn't work, so. But, uh, yeah, I thought that, I thought the most important thing was in the glossary, you had, uh, the definition of what a vacant house wa, is, and I thought that was good. That's very clear as to what that means. So I think it's a good step. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it's, you're gonna learn a lot by doing this, and I think it'll be really helpful.
Uh, implementation of it is an, another thing, and as with many things, it'll come down to enforcing it. I mean, there's a million questions you can say, okay, you say, you know, we determine that it's a vacant house, we tell them that they need to register, they don't register. You know, we put in a fine there, they don't pay the fi, I mean, a, a, at some point, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of details, you know, devil's in the details of actually doing this, but, but, I mean, I, I do feel like it's a starting, starting point in terms of, you know, defining a vacant house, and, and it takes in, you know, it'll, actually, if you look at the, the current vacant houses, they're, each one of them, um, or a couple of them kind of fall in a different category. So, you know, one house is vacant, but well-maintained. You know, people keep an eye on it, so, you know, is that vacant? Yeah, it's vacant, but, you know, if it's been in that condition for more than a year, then all we're saying is it needs to be, um, we need to make sure that it's safe, even though no, cause nobody's living there. So, um, they have a longer period of time for, for vacancy. Um, so there, you, we did kind of take into account a lot of the different possibilities, um, that you can, we can run into, as, at, at least as much as we could foresee.
So, uh, Mary, so, yeah, yeah, health, health and safety are, are, are really key. The HPC and the, uh, planning commission, you know, we, we've had many discussions about this also. And, um, our concern has always been that whole thing about, uh, demolition by neglect. And, you know, I can, I can look out my window right now and see two of our Grove treasures that are slowly being destroyed. So, I'm thinking, and hoping that that's something else that's gonna be a factor in, in what you're trying to accomplish, is preserving the houses.
Well, I mean, I think we, uh, we've talked about that, and, you know, I, I think we have to do it in stages. I mean, I think one of the big concerns is people living next door to, I mean, if, if the Long's house, you know, caught fire, there many houses very close by. If you don't have any alarm system, you know, it, I mean, so that's number one concern. I think a concern for, for people who live next to these empty houses is that, you know, that there are infestations. Um, I mean, I, it seems to me that the last, and I wasn't part of it, but the last time this came up is, you know, as kind of a general discussion, that's kind of where it broke down in terms of, um, in terms of maintenance i- issues. Um, and, you know, that, not to say that that's not, it's not an issue or not a concern, but, you know, maybe that could be phased to. And the fact is, Montgomery County, you know, they will, they will come and they will require, you know, they have requirements for external maintenance, you know, and they'll follow up. But inside, you can't, unless the person lets them in, you can't get in there to see what, what's going on in there. So, I mean, if we were gonna do that, we would have to write our own, you know, way to get in, inside the house to determine, you know, maintenance-wise or deterioration-wise. And that, I, I, I think would get to be, definitely get to be court orders, you know, people aren't gonna let you, let you in. It's just a lot, you know, another level.
So, like, even like, uh, in, if we, we, you know, since we're a town, we can make our own. Uh, can we have something where they, part of the registration process would be to have a building inspector go through the house and make sure that it's safe? That would be, I think, that would be like, really, uh, a big step forward.
The, the, initially, that's what we had in there, um, but the last discussion, John was pretty adamant that he was not into, you know, since Montgomery County, at least on the books, has enforce, enforcement for violations of internal and, and external maintenance that, um, that he didn't, he didn't want us to be doing that. He wanted us to kick it over to the county. So that's why, why we separated it out.
But the county.
That makes sense, but they won't, no.
The county won't do it, so it doesn't make sense.
No.
Okay, so, so, but is, if that's. The county won't do it, so it doesn't make sense. Okay, so, so, but is, if that's something that your committee, you know, would like, then the council can look at that.
Bob, did you want, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, I actually, Peter, I would, I was suggesting that too as one of the requirements to have them do, submit a building inspection.
I guess the question was what, um, what inspection, I mean, Montgomery County has a list. I don't know if we can get a list of what, you know, what their inspectors do. I mean, I guess it would be a question of, you know, giving them things that, that we needed to check.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's precedent to that because when Jolie was mayor, she, she went in to a house and to, to inspect it in the basement. And so we have a precedent for, you know, and ob- obviously, we would have a professional building inspector. We wouldn't have the mayor or um, somebody else do that. But I just don't, I, I, I just hope you don't throw that out, just because somebody tells you that we don't want to do it. Because I think that would be really strategic, having an inspector go in.
So, so we did talk about this a lot in depth, you know, and um, and if I remember right, it's in, it's in the town charter that talks about, um, almost like a fire marshal. I can't remember who it is.
You know, has a building inspector that's employed for three years and.
But we don't, we don't have that individual right now, right? Um, and then, um, trying to, trying to put something like that in place in addition to trying to get a resolution out. Um, you know, it would just drag things out. But I think we're trying to, trying to, trying to be more proactive in, in getting something out. And then as, as, you know, we find out a little bit more, we can always revise or, or add something else.
So is this just an informational, um, this is just informational tonight or do you want this?
So, so what, what, uh, what I'd like to do is, is get agreement that we bring this back for a vote next month. Because we want it to be out there for people to read and understand and comment on. So, um, I don't know that we need a formal vote for that, but is, are people okay with, you know, not voting tonight? Because we did have a motion and a second, but voting on it in the next meeting.
How, how would we get, I mean, it, we'd like, we would, you know, welcome people's, um, additions, you know, things that they want to, you know, things that they might want us to change. How would we do that? When you were bringing up to a vote?
Well, when Eva was looking at the playground stuff, she put something in the town bulletin and on the listserv. So you could do something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's now it's out there because the, you know, the agenda and all the documents go to everybody in town, right? So, um, so then now if people have comments, they can email us, but you could, you know, you could send something out to remind them if they have comments.
Yeah, I mean, if, i- if they're looking at the town council agendas and things like that, they'll see that, see it in the materials. Um, and if, and it, I think what Eva did was sort of like above and beyond that, because that's really not necessary. But it's, you know, gonna obviously spur more people on who might not have been paying attention. So, so you could do that, if, yeah.
Okay, and then.
And I would just say that they, that they get their comments to us before the January meeting, or they could make comments in the, you know, comment period in the January meeting.
Yeah, you probably want it done even like a week or so before the meeting.
That's true.
Okay. Bob, did you have something to?
Yeah, I, I wanted to address one of the other things that Peter said about the, um, demolition by neglect. It's a complicated thing, as you know, Peter. Um, but I think that one of the really important things is to get, just get this registry in place. And I think, I think getting, getting the process in place is really important. And I think that may in, in and of itself sort of, uh, give some initiatives to, to some of the, some of the people that we're trying to influence. So.
And there, and there is a, there is a part, um, that says that if, if the mayor, um, decides that he needs to get in to the house to make sure that they're compliant with, with part of the, with the, um, requirements of the registration, that the mayor can, you know, can call for an inspection. So the first time that came, I mean, what I see is there, there, we're probably gonna have, have the first time where we need to enforce this. And so we're gonna have to, you know, someone doesn't do one of the steps, um, gonna have to, you know, to actually enforce it and show that we really mean it. And then maybe if you say, Bob, that would be the first step and then we'd be able to move on to more, you know, to other things from there.
Right, regarding, uh, I think Peter was suggesting, um, not, not the town having an inspector, but the, the actually owner would hire an inspector to do the inspection and submit the inspection essentially as a demonstration that the, the house was safe.
And that was what we had done before, but the, when we changed it so that the maintenance stuff was Montgomery County, we added that for, in terms of ma- making sure that they have, um, complied with the, with the requirements of registration, that the, the mayor could, could have an inspection of the house.
Okay, so, so thank you for, for that introduction and that information and that background. So this will be out here for a month for people to comment on and look at and make their suggestions. And we'll bring it back next week, next month for a vote. Kathy, can you note in a minute that it will, it should be on the January agenda for the vote? Thank you. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, approv- approval of removal of the playground, jungle gym.
Barbara, before we go there, can I ask a question? One quick question is, one of the things that we need to do is to also get it to the town attorney, I guess, for a review. How, how do we, how do we initiate that after?
Ask John to do it.
John will.
Everything to the, to the town attorney goes through John.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, approval of removal of playground jungle gym. Eva, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I will make the motion that we, uh, mo- remove the broken jungle gym that's on the far side, like by the baseball field.
Do I have a second?
Second it, I'll second it.
Discussion? Eva, do you want to tell us why?
Yeah, um, you know, when I started looking into, uh, originally, what new equipment should we get at the playground? I had many playground consultants flag that piece of equipment as being out of safety ordinance and dangerous. Um, and it also was struck by a tree, I don't know how many years ago, and never repaired. Um, and it's sort of on that far side. It doesn't, I know kids play with, on it, my kids play on it, but I do think that it's dangerous. We should just go ahead and remove it. It was not listed as a favorite item by anyone on the, um, on the survey. Um, and I'm hoping this might be the first step in, you know, maybe getting some new equipment eventually. Um, so, yeah. And, and we have received some supportive emails for getting, for removing it as well.
Okay. Is there, uh, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, oppose? Nobody opposed. Okay. All right, it passes. Very good.
What's the count? Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the meadow restoration plan. I don't believe Bruce Daggy is with us yet. Uh, I know he was gonna be on at 8:45. I'm gonna just text him right now to make sure. I, I sent him an email earlier with the new.
I, I am here, I'm with.
Oh, okay. Oh.
I got, I got off early.
Oh, great, 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 great. Oh, I'm so glad you're here. Well, okay, so like, hold on though. Uh, so first, uh, before we need to, uh, ask Bruce to say anything, do I have a motion? I mean, you saw the, the new plan in the, um, in the ma- meeting materials. We've been talking about this for a few months and the plans have been modified and there have been meetings and walks and all of that. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, I guess I want to say phase one of the meadow restoration plan, right? Because that's the first group of trees. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the phase one.
Okay, second, Chris?
I'll second it. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
So I, I guess really for Bruce, since we've had, you know, presentations from him before, for me, unless somebody thinks otherwise, I think he should be here just to answer any questions people have. Because I, you know, we've read the plan, we've, you know, have been familiar with it all along. You know, and the, the final plan is really tweaks of what he started with. So are, are there questions for Bruce about this?
No, I'd like to congratulate Bruce on his patience. From, from the beginning, we, we empowered him as a council to go out and he, he had a great collection of helpers, did a great job. And, um, I, I like, I like the compromise that, that came up. It seems like everybody's pretty happy with it.
Thank you.
Jet can get some sleep after, if we approve it tonight.
Other comments? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Uh, so yeah, I want to join with, with Peter in that. Thank you for, for working with the community. Um, there was, you know, some opposition and you really took the time to talk to people and address the concerns and change the plan and massage it to, to meet those concerns. And now we have something that I think, you know, pretty much is most, if not everybody is on board with. So really appreciate you taking the time to, to do that the right way. So thank you.
Um, yeah, good work by the committee. Thank you.
Yes, the committee, okay. All right, approved. Now the town council reports. You all have those in the packet. Just some highlights here. We have some new trees, 15 new trees and four new shrubs in the woods. Um, the Wettstone Spring is gonna get some more TLC in December and more restoration work. I always love walking past.
It's, um, not the spring that was already restored. So Wettstone Spring has been restored and this is actually another spring, maple, maple spring.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
My bad, sorry about that. Okay, thank you for your correction. Okay, so, and that's all gonna be coordinated with the late committee. Uh, we've had a deer harvest, three does and two bucks. Uh, we're gonna, Peter has agreed to organize a meeting between the gateway members and RJ to walk along Railroad Street to discuss ideas for improvements. And I know that's something that we've talked about on the council before, but, you know, it's kind of like there's all these moving parts and all these moving parties, uh, involved in that road there. And it'll be nice if there, if you're able to come up with a plan for improvement there. Okay, is there anything else? That's the agenda? Is there anything else for the good of the order that anyone needs to say? All right.
Great, Barbara, great save today.
When you said and we started one hour late.
Yeah, yeah. So we, I learned my lesson about, about the, the meeting length. So, um, anyway, so thank you all for being here and for all that you do for the town and such a great place to live. And so our next meeting is January 13th next year. So everybody have a good break and have fun and good night.
Thank you. Great job, Barbara.
Thanks.